My name is Sarah Petrasco. I'm the Chief Scientific Officer at the IIN. And just to kind of give you an outline of how this meeting's going to go today, first, I'm going to tell you a little bit about what the IIN is, who we are, and what we do to support nanotechnology research on campus. I'm then going to give you a brief overview of nanotechnology, since this talk is for the general public. We want to kind of orient everyone to what nanoscience is before we have our keynote speaker, Phil Messersmith, come on. So with that, I'd just like to get started. So, the IIN was established in 2000. And what it does is promotes excellence in nanoscience education and research on campus here at Northwestern. The Director of our institute is Chad Merkin. And in 2000, it was really established as an umbrella institution to kind of unite all of the nanoscience efforts that were going on on campus. So, we are affiliated with several institutions in the Chicago area, especially the other universities like University of Chicago and Argonne National Lab. We're also affiliated with a lot of industrial partners, including some of the main ones you may recognize in the Chicagoland area like Abbott and Baxter. And we're also sponsored by several government agencies that funds a lot of the work we do here at the IIN. So, our mission is really to catalyze and support world-class interdisciplinary research. We're interested in providing programs that not only support research in the lab, but actually its translation to the marketplace in terms of new technologies. We invest in critical infrastructure so that the scientists at Northwestern can more easily do their work. We're interested in developing and strengthening mutually beneficial local, national, and global collaborations of the nature I mentioned on the previous slide. And also, we're interested in supporting educational excellence and developing our scientists at all levels. So, all the way from undergraduate levels to postdoc levels. So, the IIN at a glance, you can just see some of the metrics on this slide that we're really proud of. In the last 12 years, we've been able to bring together over $600 million in support, for again, for our research, but also for our educational programs and our infrastructure. We're affiliated with 36 nanoscience centers on campus. And we're comprised of over 190 faculty members, over 550 graduate students. And all of these people are doing work that has led to over 900 inventions and a large number of products that have come out of 20 different companies we've been able to launch. So, like I said, we're not just interested in research, but we're also promoting nanoscience outreach, sponsoring several events like the one all of you guys are attending tonight. So, at the heart of everything we do at the IIN is our research. And nanoscience has a history of being very broad and interdisciplinary and really cutting across a lot of different research areas on campus. Some of the areas that we're interested in are shown on this slide, where you see we have researchers doing work in everything from medicine to materials and devices to trying to come up with clean energy solutions and environmental solutions, to, you know, developing different nanotechnology-based products that can help in, you know, food and water, and also in security and defense. So, like I was saying, the IIN is comprised of exemplary faculty, and we have over 190. And just to kind of hit home as far as how collaborative we are here at Northwestern, these 190 faculty members are actually across 25 different departments. And they're actually also very highly recognized in their field. A lot of them are very highly cited researchers. And many of them are actually also members of some of the most prestigious academies for science in the United States, like the National Academy of Sciences and Engineering and the Institute of Medicine. And not only are our faculty highly recognized, but our students are also exceptional. Of the over 550 that have come through the IIN, many are actually fellowship winners, scholarship winners. And the fellowships that they win are very highly coveted, very exclusive, both from private institutions as well as the national government. So, this slide just lists some of the centers we're affiliated with, and I won't go through all of them. But again, you can see that we have relationships with different institutions that are promoting, again, this all of these cross-disciplinary type of research here at Northwestern. One I will mention is our relationship with Argonne National Lab. You guys may be familiar with this national lab. It's actually located just southwest of downtown Chicago. And our partnership with them really makes it possible for our researchers here to do work that they wouldn't otherwise be able to do, just because Argonne has unique facilities that we can't support here at a university. So, like I said, we don't just collaborate with scientists in the Chicago area, but we're, we have domestic collaborations from coast to coast. And this is not only academic institutions, but industrial partners and national lab partners. And not only that, we also have a global perspective on nanoscience because we collaborate with researchers from all over the world. Often, we have visiting scholars come from Asia, from Europe, to do work at our institute. So, in terms of the infrastructure we've been able to establish, we have Ryan Hall here on the Evanston campus, which is just a couple buildings towards the lake from us. And this was actually the first federally-funded nanotechnology facility in the nation. And then, more recently, the Silverman Hall was established. And this hall is basically designated towards scientists doing work in molecular therapeutics and diagnostics, and was made possible through a donation by Rick and Barbara Silverman. And again, we also have efforts going on in the Chicago campus with the Lori Medical Research Center. And this is really great because it gives a chance for the scientists on the Evanston campus to really interact with medical scientists and doctors on the Chicago campus. And this has led to a lot of fruitful collaborations that have led to some of these products and technologies that have actually been able to be commercialized. And then, like I was mentioning before, we have a strong relationship with Argonne National Lab. So, this slide just shows some of our shared and core facilities. This is another good example of the type of infrastructure we've been able to establish. Scientists at Northwestern can pretty much do any experiment they want using these facilities. Basically, anything ranging from looking at nanoparticles on surfaces to looking at nanoparticles in cells and other biological structures. And so, this is a real big, it's a very big draw for some of the top scientists in the country to come here to Northwestern to do their work. In terms of promoting economic development, like I was saying, we're not only interested here in doing our work in the lab, but we're also very passionate about being able to translate the work we're doing to the marketplace where it can benefit the general public. We've watched over 20 companies since the inception of the IIN, and some of them are listed on this slide. And you can see that there's a professor that's been involved with the founding of each one of these companies. So, we don't do this alone. We actually partner a lot with the Kellogg School of Management. And we team up IIN researchers with Kellogg graduate students and get a little insight on how we can better develop business plans. And this is interesting because there are a lot of challenges that arise just because these products we're trying to develop are nanotechnology-based. So, this just slide just shows some of our successes. We've had over 200 new products come out of IIN research, which is pretty unprecedented. And you see here that a lot of the products we've been able to commercialize are in the biomedical area in terms of being able to detect disease and to be able to treat disease. And one of our most recent success stories is the NanoFlare, which was commercialized from Oracence LLC. And this is basically an intracellular detection tool that can basically do what no other type of detection tool that's available can do. And it's based on some gold nanoparticles that were developed here at Northwestern. And then, we're not only interested in starting our own companies, but we also want to partner with companies that are already established. And our Nanotechnology Corporate Partners Program allows us to do that. So, this allows us to basically identify companies that, whose R&amp;D aligns with our own, and then builds and maintains professional relationships with them. And so, through these types of collaborations, we can gain insight as well as support our own efforts at the IIN. And this slide just shows some of our corporate partners we've been able to work with over the last 12 years. And like I said, some of them you'll recognize as being leaders in the Chicago area, like Abbott and Baxter. Others you'll recognize as being national or even global companies like Dow. And another thing you'll notice is that a lot of these companies that were, that are corporate sponsors now are actually started up out of the IIN. So, it's kind of a way for them to give back and to still interact. In terms of outreach, we do obviously town halls like this one. But we also have a number of other symposia throughout the year, such as our annual IIN Symposium, which often attracts world-renowned speakers and Nobel laureates to Evanston. And we've also launched a couple of journals. One was Small, which was actually one of the first nanoscience journals ever to be founded. And this was through a partnership with Wiley Publishing. And then, also, we were able to establish the first undergrad journal in nanotechnology. And this was a good training ground for younger scientists to kind of get a handle on the publishing process and learn a little bit about kind of what that, what that part of science takes. In terms of impacting education, we have fellowship programs that we offer to exceptional graduate students and postdocs, some of whom are in the audience, actually. And we also have undergraduates and pre-college teachers that we support through summer programs. And this is really important because these pre-college teachers can actually go back and incorporate some of what they've learned over the summer into their lesson plans. And like I was saying, for the general public, again, we have town hall meetings. But we're also very excited about a partnership that we have with the Museum of Science and Industry. And so, we're hoping this exhibit on nanotechnology opens later this year and that everyone will be able to go and see it down there. We're also very excited to support theatrical performances, basically, science-themed, science-themed ones, as well as things like the All Scout Nano Day, which allows boy and girl scouts to earn a nanoscience patch. Second thing I'll do is give you a brief introduction on nanotechnology. Okay, so, some of you in the audience are probably pretty well-versed in nanoscience. And some of you, this might be one of the first times you've heard about it. So, just to get, to get everyone on the same page, I thought I'd give you just a brief introduction, tell you a little bit about what it is and what people are talking about when they talk about nanometers. So, at the end of this talk, you should be able to answer these questions on this slide. So, we're going to talk about what is a nanometer? What is nanoscience and technology? I'm going to tell you a little bit about the history of the field and why it's so important. Why do we even care about studying things that are really small? Then, I'm going to talk to you about some common nanoparticles, how we make them, what their properties are, and then what they can do for us. So, the first thing I want to do is talk to you a little bit about how small a nanometer is. And there's really no one better to answer this question than the Director of our institute, Chad Merkin.
You keep saying you're building things on the nanometer scale. I don't even know what a nanometer is. So, this is a meter, this is a centimeter, this is a millimeter. Is this a nanometer? What's a nanometer?
Let me try to illustrate it for you. If we shrink you by a factor of two, you're about the size of a small child. We continue to shrink you by a factor of two, four more times, you're about the size of a golf ball. We go to 10, you're now the size of an ant. We keep going another seven times, and now you're about the diameter of a human hair. That's roughly what we can see with the naked eye.
Even after so much shrinking, I'm not even close to the nano scale. Cut me in half five more times, and I'm the size of a red blood cell. Five more times, I'm a virus. Seven more times, and I'm finally 1 nanometer in size. One billionth of a meter. That's less than half the width of DNA.
Okay, so now, everyone knows how small a nanometer is, right? So, that was actually from a Nova episode. If you're interested in watching all of it, you can probably find it online. It was called "Making Stuff Smaller." Okay. So, just to reiterate what was shown in the video. So, the nanometer is much smaller than a flea, much smaller than the diameter of your human hair, much smaller than many biological structures that are found in your body, including red blood cells, bacteria, and viruses. It's about the size of a DNA strand or another type of biomolecule that's found inside your body. And so, the official definition of what a nanoscale object is is one that has at least one dimension, either its height, its length, or its depth, that measures between 1 and 100 nanometers. So, now that we know what a nanometer is, what is nanoscience and technology? And you can define it a lot of different ways. But around here, we basically say that it's about making, characterizing, and manipulating materials on the nanometer-length scale. And not only that, but also determining the consequences of making things smaller in terms of what type of new properties do we see? And then, being able to use those properties to develop new technologies. So, some people might wonder, how does nanotechnology fit within the framework of the other scientific disciplines that are out there? So, more traditional fields like chemistry and physics and biology. And what we like to tell people is that nanotechnology is actually a highly disciplinary, interdisciplinary field that's central to all these sciences. And in fact, researchers in all of these fields can be nanoscientists and can work on nanoscience, nanoscience projects. So, nanoscience and technology really encompasses all fields. And oftentimes, it takes researchers from all these different fields to be able to solve challenges in nanoscience and technology. So, a little bit of history about the field. A lot of people credit a famous physicist by the name of Richard Feynman with kind of anticipating this field was going to really come to pass and be a growing area of interest in science. And he said in a 1959 speech called "There's Plenty of Room at the Bottom", and he says, "I am not afraid to consider the final question as to whether ultimately, in the great future, we can arrange the atoms the way we want, the very atoms all the way down." So, he's talking about being able to construct nanoparticles and other nanostructures atom by atom, and be able to learn about this field and just thinking about the exciting developments that could come out of it. But he wasn't actually the first person to use nanoparticles. Nanoparticles have been around, you know, since the beginning of time. And the first kind of instances of people being able to use nanoparticles started as early as 300 AD, where you had artists and architects use these materials as pigments when they were making sculptures, when they were making cups like this one, called the Licorages Cup. And also, nanoparticles are actually what give stained glass its color. So, people were using nanoparticles, but they really didn't know what they were doing. It wasn't until the time of Richard Feynman, in the mid-1900s, when people started to develop an early understanding of what nanoscience was and started to think about making things smaller, making things like miniaturized transistors and bucky balls, being able to place atoms in particular designs, or being able to place nanoparticles in certain locations next to each other, or actually being able to control the shape of nanoparticles, so going beyond spheres to things like triangles and rods and other shapes. So, really, the last 20 years have been a very exciting time in this field. So, what's important about size? Why do we care? Basically, you see on this slide, you know, what are we talking about when we scale things down, or scale things down from gold all the way smaller and smaller until we get several gold nanoparticles? And the answer is that on this length scale, size, shape, and composition matters. And you can see one example here, just in terms of what things optically look like. So, you see a bunch of different nanostructures at the bottom that are, all have different size, shape, and composition. And you see the resulting scattered light that comes off of these nanoparticles. And so, if you compare, for example, two different sets of silver spheres, one's just a little bit bigger than the other, they have a completely different color they're giving off. In the same way, if you look at, say, gold spheres here that are 100 nanometers in size and compare those to silver spheres that are 100 nanometers in size, again, a very different color is given off. But all this change is the composition. And then, finally, you can, you can do the same thing with size. If you compare, for example, silver nanoprisms on the left to these same-sized silver spheres in the middle, you can see that, again, we go from yellow to red. And so, this wouldn't happen with a brick of gold at the macro scale, for example. If you have a pound of gold and a half a pound of gold, it pretty much looks the same. And that's not all. It's not just optical properties. It's not just how things look. It's also how they react. So, we also have catalytic properties, electrochemical properties, melting and magnetic properties, for example, that change. So, how nanoparticles interact with other substances and chemical reactions, how they transfer electrons to and from each other, all these properties change just because the size, shape, and composition of the nanoparticle changes. So, what are some types of nanoparticles? And so, some of you may be surprised to learn that there's nanoparticles everywhere. There's nanoparticles in your body right now. There's nanoparticles in the air we're breathing. They're found in volcanic ash, ocean spray, very common places that everyone's familiar with. So, there's the kind that are found naturally, and then there's the type that scientists are making in the lab, or the type that humans make incidentally, just by sandblasting or mining, or cooking, or a result of a lot of other processes. These kinds on the right are ones that we can actually engineer. And these are engineered nanoparticles. So, to give you a couple examples of ones that are found naturally, we see here, this is a special type of protein called ferritin. It's about 12 and 1/2 nanometers in diameter, and it stores and releases iron in the body. And it's found pretty much everywhere, in bacteria, in humans, in animals, and plants. It's essential to life processes. And you'll find that with a lot of nanoparticles in nature, a lot of their jobs are to carry and transport molecules inside the body that are essential for life. Another area where nanostructures are found are in, are in things like butterfly wings. So, this is, on the left here, you see some images that are taken through a high-powered microscope of the nanostructure that is responsible for this blue color of this butterfly. And so, this is one example of, you know, nanoscientists see this, and we want to take this inspiration from nature to create some of our own structures with some cool properties like this. And this is kind of what Dr. Messersmith is going to be talking about when he gets into his portion of the talk. So, in terms of actually making these nanoparticles, you can imagine there are a lot of different ways, depending on the type of nanoparticle you're trying to make. You can think about it in kind of two different frameworks, though. You can either go from the top down, where you're taking a really large brick of something and trying to whittle it down until it's really, really small, smaller than the human hair, smaller than a flea, and it's finally on the nanometer-length scale. Or you can think about building things from the bottom up. So, you can think about trying to take individual atoms and place them exactly where you want them to build larger structures. And so, nanoscientists use both of these types of methods, depending on the type of particle they want, they want to make. So, the first type of process I want to introduce is photolithography. And this is used a lot in the semiconductor industry. So, to make the chips that are inside your phones, your iPads, your computers, they use a lot of this process. And essentially, what happens is they take a substrate that they want a pattern. They put a chemical called a photoresist on top that's really reactive to light. Then, they add a mask. And so, the holes in this mask allow light to shine through, but only on certain locations. And so, then, where the light shines, it actually has a chemical reaction going on in the surface that makes it really easy for that part of the chemical to decompose and be washed away. And so, then, what you're left with is a pattern that you can finally remove the rest of the chemical. You're left with a pattern that can be on the nanometer-length scale. And you can see just a typical image of one of the types of patterns we can make here, where we can make things as small as micrometer or nanometer structures. And going beyond that, if we want to just make nanoparticles in solution, people kind of come up over the years with a lot of different recipes to do this. So, you add one chemical to another chemical, you heat, and you get something like a nanotube. You know, you add two different kinds of chemicals in solution, and you get a quantum dot that has this interesting fluorescent property. Or you get things like gold particles or silver plates. Every one of these nanostructures has a different recipe that you can use to make it in solution. And then, another way we can make things from the bottom up is through self-assembly. And so, this is basically programming molecules and materials so that they assemble on their own. So, we don't have to sit there and go through by hand and assemble everything because you can imagine that would be impossible. So, we basically design and program into these materials ways in which they will assemble on their own into mushrooms, wires, or ribbons. And so, now, to you a little bit about the types of nanoparticles that are out there, a lot of people ask, well, how toxic are they? How worried should we really be? And the answer is that it varies. Just like things on the macro scale can be either toxic or non-toxic, so can things on the nano scale. And it also depends a lot on how they're delivered, what phase they're in. So, one of the classic examples of a nanoparticle being relatively non-toxic is shown here. So, this is a gold particle with DNA on the outside. And if we put these into mice cells, for example, you can see that this pellet down here of cells is red. And that's just because it has so much gold in it that it looks red in color. But these part, these cells are actually fine. If you run tests on them, scientists have shown that they're still alive and functioning, even with all of these nanoparticles inside. One of the classic examples of particles being toxic are carbon nanotubes. And you can see that these structures form these tangles. And so, you can imagine that if you breathe those in, they might cause some trouble with your lungs. But given that, scientists have found that if you put these into composites, they're actually safe. So, in terms of tools for studying nanoparticles, you might be wondering how we can even visualize structures that are so small. And the answer is that we actually have high-powered microscopes that use electron beams rather than light. And all of these instruments are available here on campus to our researchers. And we can get images like the ones below, where you can see rod structures, triangular structures, or even layers of single atoms. One last tool I'm going to talk about for studying nanostructures is the atomic force microscope. And it has a nanoscale tip on the end. And if you raster this tip across the surface and it encounters something that's really small, it'll basically deflect and let you know it's there. So, what you see down here is the height profile of a virus that has dimensions on the nanometer-length scale. And this AFM tip was used to image it. And the interesting thing about some of our tools we can use to image is that they can also be used to create nanostructures. And so, these AFM tips can actually be used, just like you would a pen on a piece of paper, you can drag the tip along and deposit a nanostructure. And so, the type of structures you can deposit, some of them are seen on the right. This is an excerpt from a speech by the famous physicist I was mentioning earlier that was all actually written with an AFM tip. And some of the features are as small as 60 nanometers in width. And this is all through a process that was developed at Northwestern called dip-pen nanolithography. So, the last thing I'm going to do to wrap up is just tell you about some areas of impact. So, how can we apply these? What are they, what are they good for? And five of those areas are listed on this slide. And I'll go through each one by one and give you an example. So, the first is electronics. And so, some scientists at Northwestern and around the world are interested in making molecular transport junctions. And this is just where a single molecule is spanning the gap between two electrodes. And some of these molecules can be as small as 1 to 3 nanometers in length and can actually conduct electrical current. And one of the advantages of this is that you can fit many, many different devices into a very small space. So, one example we like to say is that you can fit over 900 billion transistors in the volume of a single sugar cube. And as you can imagine, this would require a lot of high-powered instrumentation and a lot of new lithographic tools to achieve. But it is making an impact on the field. And it was actually, and especially on next-generation electronics. And these tools were actually just featured in a National Geographic article or magazine entitled "100 Scientific Discoveries That Have Changed the World." And nanolithography was featured at number one. Molecular electronics was featured at number nine. So, next, in terms of medicine, like I was alluding to before, we have nanoparticles that are going into all different areas, ranging from diagnostics to imaging to therapeutics. And the reason why people are so excited about nanoparticles is because they can do things, they can achieve things that traditionally-used therapeutics and diagnostics can't achieve. So, they're often basically the basis for high sensitivity and high-selectivity diagnostics. In terms of imaging materials, they can give better contrast in, for example, MRI than traditionally-used materials. And they also have theranostic capabilities, which means they can only, not only image, but also be used to treat. In terms of their intercellular properties, we can use them in cells to manipulate cells genetically and to make measurements we couldn't normally make using other materials. And there've actually been a lot of research and a lot of evidence to show that there are actually better approaches to drug delivery and gene therapy. So, you can use nanoparticles to treat cancer, for example, that can, that hopefully won't cause the same harmful side effects as normal routes like chemotherapy. And this is just one example I'll show quickly, where we had a nanoparticle we made here at Northwestern, a special kind, that was put into a mouse that had a tumor. And you can actually see that the nanoparticles were able to indicate where that tumor was and then be used to treat it at the same time. And you can see just from this graph that it was able, that the mice that were treated with nanoparticles were actually, increased their survival over ones that hadn't been. In terms of energy, nanostructures are basically involved in all different solutions to our energy energy crisis. Everything from generating energy cleanly through catalyzing reactions that better, more efficiently use fossil fuels. They're used as components in some types of solar cells because they can more efficiently separate charge than other materials. And also they're used basically for energy storage purposes. And the type of structure you see here is called a metal-organic framework that can actually hold in things like hydrogen gas. In terms of clean water and the environment, nanoparticles can be used for both remediation and detection. You can put certain types of nanoparticles into environmental waste sites, for example, and they'll soak up all of the toxic ions that are present. And these type of materials are called calcagels, and they're very highly porous structures, as you can see from this image. And then nanoparticles are also used in detection. So you see here one example of a mercury ion detection system that was developed at Northwestern. It's not only extremely sensitive, it was actually the most, one of the most sensitive calorometric assays at the time it was developed. So it's not only sensitive and selective, but you can also see that it's something that can be visualized with the naked eye. So you could imagine that any researcher or any technician that's on site that wants to know if a water sample's been contaminated can simply use this test to determine the mercury content. Then the final thing I'll mention is the use of nanotechnology and security and defense. So you can imagine because they're so small, they're very stealth, so you can't see them with the naked eye. And so they're lightweight, and they're easy to apply to things like military vests or to dollar bills. And people have found applications in the areas of chemical and biological detection, high-value item authentication, and covert tracking and labeling. And just one example of that is shown on this slide, where you see that we can make a rod-like nanostructure. And you can imagine that the presence or absence of each of the little discs as part of this rod as a unique code. And these codes are actually just as small as a red blood cell. So these little codes can be incorporated into currency, into clothing. And you can imagine that, you know, only if you knew they were there, and only if you had this high-powered microscope, that you could see them, and then you would know whether your dollar bill, for example, was authentic or not. And you can imagine, you know, you can go do many more codes than this. You can think about just expanding that number based on how many discs you have and getting an infinite number of codes out of it. So where is nanotechnology now? So some of the stuff I've talked about today is still, obviously, in the developmental stage, but there are some places where it's actually being used and commercialized. One of those areas is in disease detection. So this is actually a system that is sold by Nanosphere, one of the startup companies that come out of the IIN. Places like Intel are using these, like I said, to design your next-generation cellphones or computer chips. They're also used in medicine, like bone replacement. This is the type of nanocrystal and scaffold that is actually commercially available. And they're also found in high-performance batteries in some of these electric cars that everyone's hearing about in the news. They're also in sunscreens, so scientists have found that these nanoparticles actually reflect the sun's rays a lot better than some of the traditionally-used materials. Some of the carbon nanotubes I mentioned are made up of, you know, made into composites and then used in bicycle frames, snowboards, or tennis rackets to make them lighter and stronger. Silver nanoparticles are often embedded in home appliances, like washing machines and refrigerators, because they've been found to have antibacterial properties. And then finally, they're prevalently used on fabrics, so some of the waterproof fabrics that resist stains, that resist spills, all of those things could contain nanoparticles. And so with that, I'll just kind of prospect a little bit about where we think the field is going. So back in 2000, Bill Clinton established the National Nanotechnology Initiative, and this was basically to move nanoscience research to the forefront in this country. And like I said, a lot of the growth and development, as happened in the last decade in this field, has been largely due to this support. So in his speech, his State of the Union address in 2000, he was saying, "Soon researchers will bring us devices that can translate foreign languages as fast as you can talk, materials 10 times stronger than steel at a fraction of the weight, and this is unbelievable to me, molecular computers the size of a teardrop with the power of today's fastest supercomputers." And so just from what I said, you can see that we've made some progress in, you know, moving towards some of these goals, but we think there's still a lot of work to do. And so we really hope that this type of support continues, and especially the support from the general public. So I'll just conclude then with further reading and resources to anyone who's interested. You can visit www.nano.gov. You can visit our IIN website. You can also like us on Facebook to get updates about what type of things we're doing here, or follow us on Twitter. And then there's also a few books I listed at the bottom, if you want a little bit more reading material. And so with that, I'll conclude my part of the talk, and I'll take any questions. So the question was just the calcagels I mentioned, do I know of anywhere they've actually been used in terms of environmental remediation? So I'm not sure about those specific ones specifically, but I do know that nanoparticles were being considered for the BP oil spill a couple years ago. They were looking at a lot of different surfactants. Surfactants are another different type of nanostructure that can kind of soak up, you know, toxic chemicals. So that's one example. They are being used in different forms. All right, so then we'll move on to the next part. It's a pleasure to introduce Philip Messersmith. He is a Haven professor here at Northwestern University. He has appointments in the departments of biomedical engineering, materials science and engineering, and chemical and biological engineering. He earned his BS in life sciences in 1985, and his PhD degree in materials science and engineering in 1993 from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. He was a postdoctoral fellow at Cornell from 1993 to 1994, and a faculty member at the University of Illinois Chicago before becoming a faculty member at Northwestern. He's published over 130 publications and has given over 220 invited presentations on his research worldwide. His honors and awards include a Young Investigator Award from the Whittaker Foundation, a Merit Award from the National Institutes of Health, the Langmuir Lecture Award from the American Chemical Society, and he's also the recipient of the 2013 Clemson Award for Basic Research from the Society for Biomaterials. In addition to that, he's a Fellow of the American Institute for Medical and Biological Engineering, the Royal Society of Chemistry, and the International Union of Societies of Biomaterial Science and Engineering. He's also the co-editor-in-chief of Biomaterial Science and is the member of numerous other editorial and advisory boards for nanoscience journals. And his research interests, which we're going to hear a little bit about today, include biological adhesives, the design of biomimetic polymers and polymer composites, and the development of novel biomaterials for regenerative medicine and anti-falling polymer surfaces. So with that.
Thanks very much, Sarah. Can you hear me okay? Good. So thank you for coming. I know the weather is awful, although I don't think it's raining on the internet, but it sure is here. So I want to talk about our research on biomimetic nanotechnology with an emphasis on borrowing ideas from biological systems, in particular biological materials that have interesting properties that hopefully we can learn from and adapt to make new, novel materials that have useful, practical applications. You've all passed Nanotechnology 101 now, so, but I'm going to start my talk with a quiz, which is, please look at these pictures here, and I would like to know what you think these materials all have in common.
[laughter]
Right. Exactly. So that's what I was hoping you would say. Yeah, so if you like mussels, and many people don't, if you like squid, most people like these other things, it's the ingredients of a good dinner, maybe. But that's not the answer I was looking for, really. What they have in common, and is interesting to us in my lab, is that they're all very high in polyphenol content. Okay? Polyphenols are aromatic compounds, so for example, phenol has this benzene ring with a hydroxyl group. And polyphenols in small molecule form, some examples of which are shown here, catechols and galate or galal residues, these are all building blocks for polyphenols. And in everything that you see in this slide, mussels, squid, red wine, coffee, tea, chocolate, they have polyphenols for a variety of different reasons. Okay? I think we're all familiar with, or we've heard maybe reports in the media about the beneficial properties of drinking red wine and tea and coffee. And those are due to the high polyphenol content. Those compounds are polyphenols. Okay? Now, actually, I was not intending for you to think that the normal part of the squid, which you eat, say if you're having calamari, which is, you know, the soft tissue, is high in polyphenol content. Certainly, there would be some polyphenol there. But actually, it's the squid ink that is actually very, very high in polyphenol content. Squid ink is a form of melanin. Okay? And melanin is a polyphenol macromolecule. If you've never had dishes prepared with squid ink, I recommend you try it, because one of the best risottos I've ever had was squid ink risotto. Okay? Now, on my title slide, I had gecko. If you're curious about where gecko fits into this food paradigm, not very well. Okay? I suppose somewhere in the world, people eat geckos. But, and so you'll have to wait for maybe 20 minutes or so to hear the story about gecko, and it merges with the story of mussels. So I'm going to start with mussels, in the middle, talk about gecko, and then end with these plant polyphenols that you see here. Okay, so if you're only familiarity with mussels is as a food, or you've encountered mussels walking along the seashore, okay, it's very unlikely they really have ever seen the way that they attach. And attaching to surfaces is essential for these organisms. They live in an inner tidal zone, so they're subjected to the forces of water, which can be very, very significant. And they often colonize on each other, as well as on other organisms, and of course on natural structures like rocks, but also on man-made structures. They're actually famous for being able to attach to pretty much anything. And so this next picture is really to give you an idea of what the mussels uses for its attachment, which is called the mussels business. Okay? It's a fibrous structure, actually a series of fibrous collagen-like fibers that are cemented or glued onto the surface through a very specialized family of glue proteins. And this picture probably doesn't do it justice, because most mussels would secrete maybe 40 to 100 of these fibers to attach on the surfaces. And it's often called collectively the mussels beard for that reason. And so in my group, we spent about 10 or 12 years now studying how the mussels accomplishes this. It's not a trivial feat to adhere to wet surfaces. As you may know, if you've used things like epoxies and other household adhesives, they typically don't work well in the presence of water. Okay? Yet the mussels has evolved a very elegant way of doing this, and I want to show you a video of how this actually works. In the video, what you're going to see is the secretion of one of these threads. So the mussels does all of these in sequence and prepares each one individually with time. And it may make, it may take actually up to many hours, perhaps even days, to secrete a full batch of threads. So in this video, which is taken in my laboratory, what you're going to see is secretion of one of these threads. And I would liken this process that you're about to see to injection molding. If you're familiar with how polymers are fabricated on an industrial scale, things like this water bottle or the cap for this water bottle, it basically is very simple and works as follows. A liquid polymer solution is injected into a mold. It solidifies either through cooling or through a reactive chemistry to cross-link the molecules together. And then after solidification, it's released from the mold. That's injection molding. And this is actually how the mussels makes its adhesive threads. So in the first part of this video, what you're going to see is the mussels going to probe around on the glass surface. We're taking this video from a camera outside of an aquarium and shooting it through the plate of glass. So the mussels submerged in water. What you see here is the mussels foot, and it's coming out of the shell and extending and actually pressing against that piece of glass right here. And in this soft-tissue organ are storage glands for the proteins that it's going to use to secrete that bisel thread. And it's going to secrete liquid proteins right here, directly onto the surface to make the adhesive pad. And then there's a groove, which you really can't see in this video, groove that extends along the length of that foot and into which it's going to inject the collagen proteins that make the thread. So if you watch this point right here, it's going to grow with size right about now, and that's injection of these proteins onto the surface. It's also injecting the proteins in the groove. And then this reaction in chemistry takes place, which I'll describe a little bit in a minute, and solidifies. And then after it solidifies, the mussels is going to pull away its foot, leave the adhesive pad, which you can now see, and then this thread is going to pop out from that groove in just a second. Okay? So I cut out a little bit, but start to finish, that's about, you know, four or five minutes, approximately. And of course, the mussels does this many, many times, and it's a pretty energy-intensive procedure and time-consuming. And that's why the mussels essentially considers this a permanent attachment. It's not something it would secrete and then a day later want to move on. Okay? It's a permanent attachment. So that was the injection molding. So the liquid proteins are secreted into, directly onto the surface, into the groove, and then they solidify. And then after solidification, the mussels pulls away, and it's got this new thread. Does it many times. All right, so how does it do it, and what does it use to accomplish this? Well, I'll try to make this story as short as possible and as accessible as possible, but it is essentially very interesting and complicated biochemistry. And so to make this story fairly concise, the proteins that the mussels uses to accomplish adhesion, particularly in this area on the adhesive pad on the substrate surface, are very high content in this unusual amino acid, DOPA, which is, I told you already, has this catechol side chain, okay? Is very rare in other proteins. It's not found in most mammal proteins, so it's not found in many other places except in the marine world as an adhesive amino acid. And it's derived from tyrosine amino acids. Okay? So the proteins are made with tyrosines and modified to add that second hydroxyl group. And if you look at the amino acid sequence of these proteins, these MEFP3 and 5, these are the proteins found right at the interface, and these are the single amino acid designates for this. So this is the entire sequence of these two proteins listed here, where if you see a red Y with an underline on it, that is a site where a tyrosine has been converted to a DOPA. Okay? And if you look at this, it won't take long for you to realize that this is a polyphenolic protein with these catechol residues distributed along the length of the protein. So the proteins are very rich in this very unusual amino acid that's not found anywhere else in vertebrate organisms. What does DOPA do? DOPA is very important in both adhesion and cohesion. Now, if I want to bond two surfaces together, or in this case, you know, a tissue to a surface, we need, to accomplish that and get good bond strength, you need both cohesive strength and adhesive strength. Adhesive strength meaning the actual interface between two different dissimilar materials, and cohesive strength as well. And so if you've ever used an epoxy, you know, the epoxy hardens and that And so if you've ever used an epoxy, you know, the epoxy hardens and that elastic hardened property, that's a cohesive property. And that's also a very similar property to this after it hardens. It's a very hard material, okay? You need both of these to work as an adhesive. And it turns out that DOPA contributes to both of these, adhesion at the interface and then cohesive properties, the bulk adhesive properties, okay? And on this slide, I'm going to tell you a little bit about how we began to understand DOPA's role. And these are very, very complicated model studies and involve, in concept, a simple experiment, which is you try to bring a single amino acid or a single protein molecule down onto a surface and pull it off and measure the strength or the force necessary to pull it off the surface. So conceptually, pretty simple. In practice, it's very, very complicated. And we use one of the tools, famous tools of nanotechnology that Sarah mentioned, which is the atomic force microscope. So again, it's a very, very sharp, you saw the picture, it has a very, very sharp tip. And for our purposes, actually, what we do is we coat this tip with some very flexible and not very adhesive polymers. And some of these polymers, actually, a very, very small number of these, have a chemically conjugated amino acid, either a tyrosine or a DOPA. And we do this experiment by bringing the atomic force microscope down and measuring the force to pull it off the surface. The experiments here are done in oxide, so not very different maybe from a rock oxide. So if you do this experiment, and by the way, all the experiment's done in water, if you do this experiment with tyrosine, you get very, very low forces. So this is a pico newton, so extremely small force. So a hydrogen bond would rupture under maybe a few pico newtons of applied force. A covalent bond, which is the strongest chemical bond, would rupture at about three nano newtons. So we're pretty low here. And just to give you an idea, if you're a biologist and you understand non-covalent interactions in biology, like receptor ligand interactions, avidin biotin or a receptor ligand interaction would rupture at about 150 or 200 approximately pico newtons using this type of approach. And so tyrosine is pretty low, all right? However, if we do the same experiment and add that second hydroxyl group, now do this experiment, okay? And we see complicated behavior, but through experiments that I won't have time to go into, we ascertain that actually, this force distribution, which is in the range from 600 to 800 pico newtons, so much, much higher than tyrosine, this is due to the interaction of the catechol of this DOPA amino acid with the oxide surface, okay? By simply adding that hydroxyl group there, we increase the force, pull-off force by five X or something like that, okay? So it's pretty significant in terms of adhesive properties to add this second hydroxyl group. And I will skip the force, pull-off force description of the quinone. This is a chemical equilibrium here. It's actually very important in the next property of, or role for DOPA, which is this cohesive property. In other words, the solidification and the elastic property of this unusual glue. And here, actually, what happens after the mussel secretes that protein liquid is an oxidation reaction in the bulk of the material happens, which converts this catechol side chain of the DOPA to a quinone, okay? And this is a very reactive species. And it reacts with other residues of DOPA and other things in the system and actually cross-links the liquid proteins into a three-dimensional matrix. And that is the chemistry which gives rise to the liquid-to-solid transformation that occurs in about three or four minutes, right? Mussel injects a liquid, protein, solidifies, and then releases. So all of this chemistry that you see here, it's of course simplified. All of that happens very rapidly, okay? There's the role for iron, which I don't have, I have time to go into. This business, the fibers as well as the adhesive plaque are enriched in transition metals, including iron. And these appear to have a mechanical role through formation of interactions like you see here, which are coordination bonds, not covalent, but coordination bonds, okay? So DOPA, to end this part of the story, DOPA is very important in the adhesive interactions at the interface between the adhesive and the substrate and in the cohesive properties. Okay? So as I started out by saying that we're interested in making novel materials, which are mimics or are inspired by the native materials, we do a lot of design and synthesis of polymers to try and capture this tremendous property of DOPA and other amino acids to, for good practical uses. And I want to tell you about a few of these. Actually, in the medical area, the one that I'll tell you about is very, very simple polymer and tremendously simple compared to the protein. The protein is a very complicated protein. Here, we're trying to take out what we believe are the most important components from the protein, put them on a synthetic polymer platform, and then use that in the next few slides in a medical context, okay? This is the polymer, which you saw the cartoon of before. It's a forearm polymer, okay? Each of the end groups on these arms, you can see the catechol, okay? So it's a very simple mimic of these complex proteins. And because we have this part of the molecule there, which is the same as in the mussel adhesive proteins, we can take advantage of the same cross-linking chemistry and same adhesion chemistry that the mussel uses. And for us, we're interested in bonding tissues together in a surgical environment or bonding a medical device to a tissue, okay? Here's some of the medical applications we're interested in. I only have time to tell you about one, which is really a very recent and exciting activity in the lab, which involves fetal membrane repair. This is a surgical discipline, which is relatively new in terms of surgical disciplines, and involves the attempts by a surgeon to do corrective procedures on the fetus in the womb, okay? So fetal surgery, first fetal surgery was only done about 30 years ago, okay? And it's done for a variety of reasons, many of them congenital deformities, which can be corrected in new growth. And can either be done through open or conventional surgery with a scalpel to make a large incision and access the fetus, or through an endoscopic approach, so-called fetoscopy, okay? Which is pictured here, which is two or three ports are made. The challenge and the problem is shown below, okay? Which is, no matter which approach you go with, you have to cut through or poke a hole through the amniotic sac or the fetal membranes. And this has a very, very poor ability to heal spontaneously, okay? So after the procedure is done, you have a fairly high risk of leakage of the amniotic fluid, infection into the womb, both of which can give rise to premature labor, okay? And there is nothing clinically that is approved in terms of medical device anywhere in the world for surgeons to seal these wounds. And this is something that we're interested in doing with these simple polymer mimics of mussel adhesive proteins, okay? So here's some experiments I just tell you about. These are in the experimental preclinical stage. This is a human fetal membrane, discarded fresh tissue. The device it's sitting on here is just, its purpose is to stretch the tissue to the native stretch state. And then we poke a hole with one of these fetal endoscopic tools right in the middle there. You can see the hole here. It's about three and a half millimeters. And then we apply our sealant, which is that polymer that I showed you. And actually, let me go back and make one more point, which is, it's fairly easy to implement this in a clinical environment because you can dissolve this polymer into a buffer or saline, excuse me, add an oxidant and use a device that looks like this, which has two barrels. When the surgeon presses, the two liquids come together, the oxidant acts as a catalyst and gives it the reaction. And when the liquid comes out, it forms a solid adhesive, anywhere from a few seconds to maybe a minute or two, okay? And so we're using that material here by applying it directly onto this fetal membrane, which has this hole. And then after solidification, we, in this experiment shown below, we've simply cut through the tissue and visualized the adhesion of the adhesive to the tissue. You can see the darker material here, it doesn't really come out very well, but the darker material is the adhesive. The lighter material in the middle is the fetal membrane, and this is the gap that we've bridged with this liquid material. The adhesion is very, very good to this wet tissue, so it's a very promising result. Currently, we are in this stage actually of animal testing for this. We actually use rabbits for this purpose. The reason it's very convenient to use rabbits is they have somewhere between five and 10 fetuses. So one mother, you can do quite a few experiments, so it has some advantages. And here's a picture of one of these experiments. Basically, we poke a hole and then fill it with either a combination of our adhesive, this is the tip of the applicator, and a three-dimensional matrix. It's a tissue material, actually. And these are, this is in progress and unpublished, but basically, these are some of the findings that we have so far. The interesting comparison, I think, to make here is the positive control, which is basically you poke a hole and you do nothing. Thirty-six percent survival rate of the fetuses, okay? And if they do survive, 75% of the membranes are leaky. And the, either the combination, either the use of the mussel-inspired glue alone, which increases the survival rate to 60%, or the mussel glue plus this tissue plug increases the survival rate to 80%, okay? So this is just an example of how we think about starting from the biology to the material and through this inspiration, hopefully, give rise to some useful new materials. So that will wind up the medical part of, well, not the medical, yeah, I guess it is the medical part, primarily the medical part related to adhesive materials to bond tissues, okay? Next, I want to talk about melanin and melanin mimetic coatings. I mentioned the squid ink earlier. Melanin, of course, is a very widely distributed biological pigment. It's in our hair, skin, in our eyes. And this is synthesized in our tissues through a pathway that actually involves DOPA, but not in a protein, as a free amino acid. So begin from tyrosine, and then there's an enzyme that adds a second hydroxyl group to form the DOPA, oxidation of the DOPA, and then pathways that are not so well-understood to form the biological pigment, melanin, which is a polyphenol again. So that's a common theme that we'll come back to time and time again. Melanin is a polyphenol, okay? A student in my lab a few years ago, Haitian Lee, discovered actually that if you take off this carbosyl group from DOPA, which gives you dopamine, same dopamine as you may know as a neurotransmitter, you actually can recapitulate most of this chemistry and form melanin-like material in a test tube or in a beaker, okay? And then the interesting thing that he discovered is that if you take dopamine and dissolve it in water at roughly marine pH, marine pH eight to eight and a half, and then while this melanin-like material forms, actually, if you immerse an object in there, okay, just dip it in there while this reaction is occurring, and then pull it out after some period of time, what you find is a conformal melanin-like coating that has been deposited on this, on the material that you put in. So here's some pictures of, before and after pictures of a variety of materials. These are flat materials. And basically, because of the polyphenol nature of the melanin-like molecule and dopamine, basically, it can stick to pretty much anything. So you see some polymers here that are hydrophobic and difficult to adhere to, like silicone, polyurethanes, platinum, cellulose acetate glass. These are fibers, pretty much it works on anything. And you can see the color change, which is kind of, gives you an idea that this is a melanin-like coating. And these coatings are very thin. They're about maybe five to 10 nanometers or a little bit larger in thickness. So they're in, they definitely fall within this nano regime, which we're talking about here tonight. Here's one of the things that we're looking at for this application here, which is cancer cell photoablation using nano rods, which are composed of gold and which have a conformal coating of this melanin-like polydopamine film. The synthesis is very simple, not very interesting, just like I described to you, dopamine in a solution, add the nanoparticles, and basically, the nanoparticles come out after some period of time with a very thin coating. Here's an electron micrograph that shows these gold nano rods. These are aspect ratio of maybe three to five approximately. And you can see this thin, conformal coating, which is this melanin-like coating that's been deposited on top. It also happens to be a very good primer, if you will, to attach other things on top, to apply, if you will, other coatings on top. And then one of the things that we can do is add things like antibodies, conjugate antibodies, antibodies for targeting to cell surface receptors on, for example, cancer cells. And then we can take advantage of a very interesting photo property of these gold nano rods, which is their absorbance of near-infrared light and conversion of the near-infrared light into heat, okay? So the idea with cancer cell ablation is that through this very simple coating technology and application of an antibody, you can get these particles to the cells, cancer cells specifically, that are over-expressing receptors to this antibody, get the cell, the particles on the cell or in the cell, and then apply near-infrared light and photoblade the cells, essentially kill the cells. And so that's the data on the bottom, which shows this combination of this nanoparticle plus light in the near-infrared range kills these cancer cells here, which have been targeted with this special gold nano rod. Okay? So now let me move on to talk about geckos. And this requires a little bit of development, which arises because in the spectrum of organisms that use biological adhesion for survival, I would consider these two organisms, the mussel and the gecko, as being at opposite ends of the spectrum, okay? We learned just now all about the mussel. It's a permanent adhesive. Proteins are very unusual. Chemical interactions are very strong. It works in a wet environment. The gecko is at the other end of the spectrum in almost all of these things. The adhesion persistence is temporary. Gecko uses adhesion for locomotion. So it can't adhere so well to a surface that it can't get its foot off, okay? Think of a gecko as a biological post-it, okay? It adheres only well enough to accomplish a simple goal, which is for the gecko, its locomotion. The proteins are very ordinary. They're actually keratin proteins, very similar to our hair proteins. The interactions are weak. I'll tell you about these in a minute. And the gecko only works in a dry environment, okay? Little bit more about gecko, and you may wonder why we're talking about geckos in a nano town hall. It turns out that the gecko uses nanoscale hairs as the contact or adhesive surface, which it has on the pads of its foot, okay? So if you look at ever-increasing maturation on the foot pads of a gecko and go down to the finest scale, actually, what you see are hairs that are sort of splayed out at the edges and form these adhesive pads, okay? Which make these weak adhesives, adhesive contacts to surfaces. The diameter here at the tip is about 500 times smaller The diameter here at the tip is about 500 times smaller than a human hair, okay? So again, we're getting very, very small here. The interaction forces here now are very weak, van der Waals and other secondary bond type of interactions, as opposed to the muscle where it utilizes covalent and very strong non-covalent interactions. These are much, much weaker than any of the muscle adhesive protein interactions. There's a lot of interest in mimicking the gecko for, for example, development of robots that can climb up walls and across the ceiling and do search and rescue and covert things Now, how does this work, okay? How does a hair provide such good adhesion, all right? And this has been a subject of intense research for 10 or 15 years, okay? And there's general agreement that there's a concept called contact splitting, which the gecko exploits. And it works, I'll try to give you a simple explanation of how this works, okay? Imagine a, if I take a hair, okay, and bring the tip down onto a flat surface, and this is, I'm trying to picture this right here, and the hair has a hemispherical tip, bring it down on the surface, and then if you look at the contact area of that hair on the surface, it's going to be a circular contact area, okay? So to make contact splitting theory very simple, okay, the results, the result tells us that the adhesion strength with this sort of geometry scales as square root of n, where n is the number of times you divide up that large contact area into a smaller contact area. So if you reduce the size of the contact, you get better adhesion. So in this picture right here, the, both of these actually have the same contact area with the surface, but this has 36 contacts, this has one contact. Contact splitting theory will tell us that this will adhere six times better than that, okay? This is why the gecko foot has these foot hairs that are very, very small. So they have larger stalks, and then they split very close to the surface, okay? And if you're wondering how flies, beetles, flies, spiders, et cetera adhere, they adhere the same way, okay? But the masses of these organisms, these other organisms like the fly, is much, much lower. So they don't need to have such small contacts, okay? So a housefly has a very, very large contact surface, okay? And a gecko, which has a large mass, has to reduce its contact size into the 100, 200 nanometer range to be able to transmit enough force to suspend it itself on a vertical or inverted surface. Okay, so here's the punchline about gecko adhesion and gecko mimetic materials, which is, all of this only works under a dry environment. If you submerge a gecko foot underwater and measure adhesion, it's a small fraction of the adhesion strength as in the dry state, okay? And this is for the same arguments that most other adhesives suffer in the presence of water, okay? And so this is where we can get creative and combine strategies from different biological organisms. And we did this a few years ago by combining in one synthetic mimetic adhesive concepts from the muscle and the gecko. And it worked as follows, using a tool of nanotechnology, the E-beam lithograph or E-beam nanolithography, we patterned a surface, okay, which had a series or array of nanoscale posts, okay? So you can think of this image as an image taken from above of a tape-like material with very, very stubby, short nano hairs, okay? So, and that alone would be a fairly reasonable mimic of the gecko foot hairs, because this is hydrophobic, it's made out of silicone, very similar adhesion to the gecko, okay? Then we synthesized a polymer, which is a polyphenolic mimic of the muscle adhesive protein, okay? Applied a very, very thin coating of this polymer, you see the cataclysm here, polymer to the surface, and then measured adhesion strength in water and in air after application of this thin coating. The geometry is unchanged because this is extremely thin, okay? And here's a result. For the uncoated material, the bars here shown in, the two bars on the left was for the uncoated material, in air and in water, you can see the dramatic reduction in water, as I told you, for adhesion. And then if you apply that thin muscle mimetic coating, you get an increased adhesion in air and a manageable decrease in water. And the difference between the performance of these two adhesives in air and water is 15-fold, okay? And the material really does work like a post-it, except underwater, which is to say that you can, you can apply this tape-like adhesive to a surface, pull it off, put it back down, do this, you know, hundreds, if not thousands of times, and you get just minor decay of the adhesion strength. So this is an example of how we can combine ideas from muscle and gecko together to think about novel materials, which nature really never contemplated, because these organisms develop their adhesive solutions in very, very precise environmental situations, okay? All right, so let me finish with comments on polyphenols, okay? Polyphenols found in foods and beverages, okay? I tease you with that in my title. Here are some chemical structures of polyphenols found in things like coffee, tea, red wine, chocolate, okay? You can see the high phenolic content in all of these. And many of these are the, lend the antioxidant properties that are so famous for these beverages and foods. Now, if you take red wine or raw cocoa beans or tea leaves and do a very simple aqueous civic extraction and recover these polyphenols out of the tissue, you can see the very high concentration of, the GAE here is gallic acid equivalents. Gallic acid would be one of the building blocks of these, that's this part of the molecule here, okay? And so these extracts have very high polyphenol content, the highest being green tea and raw cocoa beans, okay? And so the next few slides ask the following question, which is, can we, can we stop thinking of these compounds as food ingredients and think about them as building blocks for useful materials? And of particular interest is controlling the solid/liquid interface and forming coatings, like I kind of described in the melanin mimetic coatings, for practical applications, okay? There's some evidence, actually, a lot of evidence, that plant polyphenols have very strong interfacial properties, okay? One of them you're probably familiar with, although you don't know it, as a, the origin of polyphenols, okay? And that's astringency. If you like red wine in particular, it also happens in apple juice, okay? If you take a sip of red wine, and particularly, you know, really bold red wines like Cabernet's, aged in oak for 18 months, you know, with high polyphenol content, you feel that puckering, that drying on your palate. And the reason you feel that is because the polyphenols in the beverage actually are very, very strong complexers of salivary proteins, the proteins in saliva, which are proline-rich proteins. So there's a very strong interaction between the proline residues in these proteins and the polyphenols. It's a non-covalent interaction, okay? And what it does is actually complexes or even precipitates those proteins, these salivary proteins, out of the saliva. So you get this sensation of dryness, okay, and puckering, okay? And these are non-covalent interactions, okay? But very, very strong and very effective at condensation of these salivary proteins. The other thing that you're probably familiar with on a practical level is the browning of fruits and vegetables. This is also due to reactions involving polyphenols, okay? Here's a picture, picture of two bananas. The one on the left, I ate, an hour later, I took this photo again, and in one hour, after simply just opening the banana, okay, what happens there is you begin mixing the polyphenols with this enzyme, polyphenol oxidase, and of course, you expose the oxygen in the air, and you get oxidation reactions, and the polyphenols here are colorless, and after they oxidize, you get this quinone, and those are the, that's the dark material that you see develop very quickly in damaged fruit. So fruit, merchandisers and manufacturers spend a lot of time and effort trying to prevent that from happening, okay? And then the final connection to tea, or to polyphenols that you may know about is tea, where the fermentation, so to speak, of tea, which can give rise to the spectrum of teas from green tea, which is low or no fermentation, okay? Oolong tea, which is moderately fermented, and then black tea, which is fully fermented. Fermentation here refers to the action of the polyphenol enzyme to oxidize the compound and induce polymerization, okay? So the polyphenols polymerize to make larger polyphenols, and this is very complex, and the pathways are not fully understood, okay? So here's, here's the last few slides, which is, can, again, can we, can we use these compounds for useful, practical purposes? Here's an interesting experiment, actually, I did in my kitchen. And so if you take an infusion of green tea, or you just pour red wine out of a bottle into a glass, or you put the green tea into a teacup, okay, and then let it sit, okay? But prevent evaporation, so it's not, you know, you're not forming a coating by drying the tea down. And then rinse out, after a few hours, you discard the tea or the wine and rinse with water, tap water, okay? You don't see any color, discoloration, really. But there is a coating there, actually. And the coating only emerges if you apply sort of an old photography trick, which is you develop it, so to speak, with silver, okay? The old silver emulsion technology for photography involved silver films, and then the addition of a polyphenol to reduce the silver halide to silver nanopart, metallic silver. We're just doing the opposite here. We have a polyphenol coating, and we're applying silver solution, and what happens is you deposit silver, okay? You form silver, and you can see the silver coating that emerges, which is really, we use to visualize the presence of this coating, which otherwise is not obvious to see, okay? This is the tea bag, actually, after dipping in silver nitrate. This tea bag in silver nitrate, you can see that, you know, silver's deposited, which infers that there's a polyphenol coating there. Maybe not so easy to see the red wine, but this wine was filled about to this level with the red wine, and then the silver, you can see a little bit of discoloration. Okay, so you can, you can actually then do this with some of these purified or extracted compounds, okay? And deposit the silver coatings, you can see the coatings are there. And again, they're very thin, so these are a few tens of nanometers, all right? And now we can, we can take advantage of some of these coating, the properties of these coatings. One is antibacterial properties, okay? These are inherently antibacterial. Bacteria die on contact with these coatings, which is a natural property of polyphenols. Actually, in many plant tissues, one of the reasons the polyphenols are there is for antibacterial properties. Here's an interesting example to modify the wetting properties of surfaces. We can make surfaces either almost fully wetting or super hydrophobic. And this is a picture of eyeglasses taken by this gentleman right here. This lens right here was dip-coated in a pyrogalal solution and then rinsed off. This was unmodified, put the glasses in the refrigerator and then take them out in a humid environment. And this glass lens, as many of us would know, fog up immediately, and this one does not because it's fully wetting, so there's no water droplets that form on the surface. And there was a question earlier about toxic metal remediation, okay? These coatings, the polyphenols, have one more important characteristic, which is they are really great at grabbing metals out of aqueous solutions. So you can, you can take these pyrogalal or tannic acid coatings and expose them to solutions of heavy metals and extract the metals out of the aqueous solutions. Okay, so I will finish here, and since we're short on time, I'm going to skip the wrap-up here. And thank you for attending. I should also thank the people that do this research that I told you about, the funding for the research I told you about, which are you, the taxpayers, so thank you. And thank you for attending. I'm happy to take any questions you have.
I was wondering if you've considered applications to the eye, ophthalmological injections, and maybe sealing the retina holes, or is this a feasible possibility or not?
Yeah, it is feasible. There happen to be products on the market for sealing incisions from eye surgery that are reasonably effective. So we, yeah, I mean, in terms of translation, we feel like that's probably a solved problem, maybe. And so, you know, we can't look at everything, so we're picking things where there are no current solutions. And the, you know, the fetal surgery realm is one place where there really are no good solutions.
Polyphenols are very easy to oxidize, as you talked about. So how, how long can the adhesive last? Like, how long time for, is the adhesion decrease as the time progresses, and how can you prevent?
Are you asking about the medical adhesives that I described?
No, just the general, like the muscle and the gecko combo hybrid material. How long can the adhesion last for?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, the data I showed you are under very well-controlled laboratory conditions in pure water. You know, as you know, a gecko would be climbing around and exposed to all sorts of dirt and other things. And this is one, actually, still a remaining mystery of gecko adhesion, which is how does it, how does it self-clean itself? The foot pads, because to get good adhesion, it has to adhere, get good contact between those hairs and the surface, okay? In our material, actually, well, I can't say because we've never done it under more realistic, practical conditions, but probably it has a limited lifetime of adhesion. And the muscle actually, those fibers, they last for maybe six months or so before the muscle actually has to secrete more, unless there's a major weather event or, you know, predator pulls it off.
So does the adhesion decrease as the, as the polyphenol being oxidized, or?
You know, I don't know that I could answer that question. I'm not sure, I don't know the answer to that one.
Can you anticipate some of these properties before you work out all the details, and or do you often find yourself looking for applications after?
Yes, we do both. I mean, we, you know, we do both, but, you know, if you want to talk about biomimetics or biological inspiration and development of materials, new materials, through that process, it or biological inspiration and development of materials, new materials through that process, it sounds wonderful to, to fully understand the biological system first and then develop materials later. I mean, that's logical, right? How can you develop a biomimetic material without understanding the biological system? But that's a dream world. Okay? We can never, I don't know of any example where we fully understand a biological system to such an extent that we, we can, cannot be forced, actually, to start biomimetic material efforts without fully understanding the materials. I mean, the muscle, the muscle has been studied for 40 years and is still not fully understood. Melanin has been studied for almost 100 years by really great researchers, and it still defies a precise chemical description. So it's, it's, it's an ongoing parallel process. Understand the biological system and develop the materials. And as we, as we progress, we learn, you know, about each side, and each side informs the other.
It's a perfect Q and A segment to my question, Dr. Mathers-Smith, because when you were looking at your work and you stated it was done in rabbits, I was curious, given the information we had delivered last week about how all of our mouse models are no longer useful, because unfortunately, the studies didn't hold up, and it was in the area of infectious disease. Which brings me to a question that I had. I noticed with your plant polyphenols, you had used it with Pseudomonas aeruginosa, and I didn't see what the other bacteria was.
Staph aureus.
Staph aureus. So in your work, are you also targeting biofilms, which are very, very resistant and would personally, I think, be, you know, just wiping out a big problem? That's one. And then two, going back to the other question about the eye, while that has been solved on a, on a sealant level, what are the indications in terms of tissue-specific responses? Have you found that some tissues demonstrate a greater robust response? Does that guide you in terms of the question on how far you'll take it therapeutically?
Yeah. So those are great questions. The first question, I can say that yes, we're interested in the medically problematic strains, MRSA, et cetera. But, you know, from, from a research perspective, you start with simpler systems and then evolve toward the more, more complicated, more challenging systems. So yes, we eventually will, will go those directions with the clinical isolates of these bacteria, et cetera. And then the biological performance of a material, not just our materials or any material, depends on context. Okay? And by context, I mean the tissue, the location of the tissue, okay, the nature of the material, and surgical technique. All of those things come together to determine outcomes. But if you're asking about, you know, would a, would a certain device or material work well in one tissue and maybe not in the other, the answer is absolutely yes. Right. I'll give you a simple example. The fetal membrane stuff that I showed you is designed to be a non-degradable material. In other words, it, once, once we place it in, onto the tissue, it's not degrading. And, and the reason is, is that we don't, we don't want that to happen, because if that happens, the seal that we've made would be compromised. Okay? But many other applications, you would want to design in this ability to degrade in, you know, in a, in a surgical reconstruction or tissue regeneration. Those are often cases where you want a totally different approach involving some sort of removal of the material, degradation, dissolution, something like that.
So, I was wondering, like, when you talked about the dopa, adhesion force between the dopa and the substrate, what sort of interaction is it like? Is it a like non-covalent interaction, or?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, it's essentially a coordination between the dopa side chain, the cataclysm side chain, and a titanium atom in the oxide surface. So titanium at the very interface of the oxide, and the cataclysm comes down and we form this, it's a, yes, it's a non-covalent interaction.
In your experiment where you were looking at the adhesion cycling, where you put the microdots of your polymer onto the plate, it appeared like in air that there was an increase in the adhesiveness at a certain number of cycles. Do you have an explanation for that?
Our, our best explanation is that the, that thin coating, which is the muscle-inspired polymer and the cataclysm, the polyphenolic part of that, significantly increase adhesion both in air and in water. So, and it's more observable, as you saw, is a significant increase in air. Of most interest to us was the difference in, in adhesion underwater, with and without that, that thin coating, which was that 15, factor of 15 difference. So, but yes, you're right. It increases the adhesion even in the absence of, of water.
Okay, so in the spirit of this being our first worldwide town hall, we have one question that actually came in off the Twitter feed, so this will be our final question for the evening. And the question is, so do the, do these type of adhesion properties occur in any other type of plants and animals besides just muscles and geckos?
Yeah, I can, there are, there are other marine creatures that use polyphenolic proteins, and I can give you one example, which is called a sandcastle worm. A marine worm that is, is bound to usually a rock or sandy surface, and it builds itself a protective tube, they're called tube worms, builds itself a protective tube by grabbing grains of sand, or little pieces of rock, or wood, or whatever happens to be around, and then actually, like, like, like a brick wall, mortar and, and a brick, actually cementing it up and building up this tube with pieces of hard, hard material that are glued together with a polyphenolic protein that also contains dopa. So there are other examples in the marine world where dopa is used as, as an adhesive. Barnacles, however, do not use dopa. It's unknown yet what, what their adhesive proteins are.
Okay. So with that, we're going to wrap up for the evening. Thanks to everyone for making it out to our night town hall.